Since that announcement, we wanted to give our city staff and our economic development team the opportunity to use this public forum to brief the community on the framework of the proposal that is before us and will be before us and before the community this year, as well as talk a little bit about the public engagement that will occur over the next several months regarding this proposal. We're going to do this first at the top of the agenda and have our staff provide this update, and then we will go into the normal public comment period, as well as the public hearing on remaining items. I do, just for those who have walked in, I just want to make sure everyone realizes, on item number 18, this is the 301 North Fairfax, that item has been deferred by the council and will not be heard until the January public hearing. So if you're here to speak on that item, you don't need to be. And so have a great weekend, enjoy it. But if you are here for anything else, thank you, we're happy to have you here. So at this point, I'm going to turn the microphones over to our city manager and our head of Economic Development Partnership and our head of Communication, I assume. No, you're not having a microphone, you're just sitting there. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, Jim Perigian, and Stephanie Landrum, the head of the Economic Development Partnership. Mr. Manager.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to take a little bit of time this morning. On a wonderful, beautiful Saturday, and Alexandria, to talk a little bit about a summary presentation you're going to receive about an economic development prospect that is moving forward into our community for discussion and potential approval of that, those set of agreements. Again, I'm Jim Perigian, I'm the city manager, and I'm joined today with Stephanie Landrum, who is the president and CEO of our Alexandria Economic Development Partnership. We're going to tag-team the presentation today and talk a little bit about the summary of the presentation and some information that hopefully clarifies some of what this project is really about, as well as talk a little bit about the process, talk about opportunities for community engagement, talk about some of the risks that this project poses, talk about some of the impacts and how we propose to look at mitigation of those impacts, including probably one of the top ones would be transportation. We're also going to talk about why this project deserves serious consideration by the community. So before I turn it over to Stephanie, I wanted to share a couple of thoughts on the project before we get into the presentation. One of the first ones is regarding the process to this point. So this is a competitive economic development project. The city of Alexandria competed against multiple states, multiple cities. So when we think about the competitive nature of this, that compels that competition to be in a more private setting to discuss concerns of the community, as expressed by the council, some of the dynamics of negotiating potential terms that could be considered by the community, things like impacts, and how do we mitigate those. Those all get discussed, and part of that negotiation in a competitive standpoint is it's not shared publicly at this point. We now are at that point where many of these things can get shared publicly. No decision, no formal decision has been made on this project. In fact, the state law, state law understands the competitive nature of economic development and does absolutely allow and permit the way that we've approached the project to this point. But a really, really important point to make, and want to really share this with the community, is that all final decisions on these projects must be made, must be made in public, must be made. And later in the presentation, we're going to review the process and engagement efforts that will be moving forward after the first of the year. I also want to highlight a little bit about what this project really is and what the opportunity is. Everyone has focused very significant attention on the arena, the arena for two sports franchises. That's very different than stadiums and things like that, but it generates an interest, right? I'm a big sports fan, and I think of things in some of those terms, I'm really excited. Having said that, it's not, this opportunity is not about sports franchises. It's not a single deal where we're moving a sports franchise from one state to the other, or one jurisdiction to the other. This is very different than that. It is about corporate headquarter relocations. In fact, Stephanie's going to talk to you today, there's two corporate headquarter relocations in this project, generating over 600 jobs in the city of Alexandria, paying on average over $130,000 in salaries. Two corporate relocations, over 600 new jobs, 130,000 in average salary. It also includes hotels, hotels that allow us to grow some of that revenue stream that we're really fortunate in Alexandria, people want to come to our wonderful city. It's an amazing city, we've been recognized as one of the best cities to visit globally, not just in the United States. Those visitors spend tax dollars, they spend, they provide and fill up our restaurants and provide, we provide services to them and things like that, that really help us from a financial standpoint and don't impact the tax burden of our existing residents. It's also about housing. This site has entitlements for housing, including affordable housing. This site, if this project moves forward, will generate significant dollar, new dollars, new dollars for affordable housing. It's also about the creation of a significant economic development anchor in our city. And I think this is an important point to kind of step back a little bit and look at how we look at the city. So our economic development growth is driven by anchors like the redevelopment of the Landmark Mall on the west side, Eisenhower and Carlisle developments that bring significant energy and entrepreneurship and employment into our city, including the recent Five Guys headquarters relocation. And then you have Old Town and Potomac Yard that provide and can provide additional economic development anchoring. And that's all meshed with amazing small businesses in things, in areas like Delray and other parts of the city. So the fabric of our city is anchors in geographically spread areas, and those anchors are intended to be intense, those anchors are intended to grow our economic development. And when I say economic development, I'm talking about revenue, net revenue, tax revenue for the city to pay for existing and new city services. That's really important. The other aspect is the better our economic development growth is in the commercial sector, the less the tax burden is on our residential population. And I just want to stress that, that's important. Whether it's a project like this or a different project, commercial economic development growth is going to be critical to our future. And not to miss this, but small business development, small business growth in our city is critical. It's also some of the most unique and special things about our city. So that fabric that exists in places like Delray, it's critical, we protect that and enhance that. The anchors help do that, the anchors help push opportunity to those small businesses, whether there be partnerships with projects or efforts that occur in the anchors, or on their own, generating good business prospects. So when you think about that fabric, you think about why Alexandria is such a special place. We have key anchors that are engines of economic development growth, meshed with small businesses, meshed with some of the nicest and best residential development that we have in, I think, in the country. And those are the types of things that we not just want to protect, but we want to preserve and grow. Another point I wanted to share is as we start the engagement process, is a recognition about this effort.
If you could pause it, Mr. Manager. If everyone can please mute their phones, everyone in the chamber, please mute your phones, it's very disruptive, thank you.
Another point I want to share as we start the engagement process is the recognition that the city of Alexandria was selected, selected and chosen to potentially be home to two potential sports franchises, which puts us in very elite company in terms of visibility and brand awareness and marketing value. We have an amazing and world-class city, and the value that this distinction carries can further that position. The same thing holds true with us being a destination for corporate relocation. Once again, over the last couple of years, you've, you know, the Five Guys headquarters, some of the corporate work that has been done to grow, this represents, again, two corporate relocations that I think is significant. If you look at what the future looks like, if that doesn't happen, and again, it's not fear, it's just questions of what choices can be made, you know, this location that Stephanie's going to talk about today has the ability to maintain itself as a strip shopping center, which does have value to the city. It does have value to the city, and we certainly will happy to share that. But that value to the city is limited in terms of what it can do to help reduce the potential tax burden on our residents. Finally, I would highlight four reasons for this project to be seriously considered by the community. And I say seriously considered, because once again, this is not a project that, council, you have not acted on this project. Council, you have not acted on this project. What you've done is you've given us direction to carry the project forward into the public process. That's where we are today. So it's four reasons, and again, these maybe, you know, people can have different sorts of opinions, but I think the first one, and you're going to hear it today, is this project aligns very well with the vision that was established for this area in a small area plan, and decades of the Potomac Yard metro station being planned and things like that. This site was always intended to be a significant development, a very, very significant development. The second point I would make is it does create, has the potential, everything has potential to happen, but it has the potential to create a stronger financial future for the city by growing our commercial tax base and visitor dollars growth, which will support city operations into the future. It also creates the opportunity to catalyze other opportunities for the region, both on the site and within the state. I think that's important because what we have found, especially, you know, with, if you have a good partner, and we believe Monumental can be a great partner for us, some of their foundation work and some of the other work that can happen that feeds off of the fact that the, that entity has its corporate headquarters here, helps us as it relates to some of the educational opportunities, helps us with some of the social needs that we might have, helps us with helping pay for some of the things that the private sector steps up regularly in our city to do, and that this helps contribute to that. And the final one is that creates opportunity for wealth creation for our residents, particularly in marginalized populations through job creation. You're going to hear today that this is the start, there's a series of agreements that need to be put in place to make this happen. Those agreements are all performance-based. So what does that mean? We establish performance that the person we're having the agreement with has to achieve. Those performance measures help achieve some of the things I've highlighted today. They don't just happen without some guarantees or some protections. And I think that's the hard part about some of the early conversation is that you hear, is this going to happen? Well, if you put the performance measures in place during the agreements, which we have every intention of doing and have been doing, it does give us extra protection. So when we say this is what we think is going to happen, or we are very confident this will happen, there'll be language that backs that up, and I think that's important. So when we talk about wealth creation, we talk about marginalized communities, we're talking about a community benefits plan, a community benefits plan that helps our community. That is an actual written agreement. It's a written agreement between the city and Monumental and some of our other partners to achieve the things that, and the goals that we want. So again, lines with the vision, creates a stronger financial future, helps grow additional economic development opportunities for existing businesses in our city, as well as new businesses, and creates opportunity for wealth creation for our residents and citizens. So I'll stop there and I'll turn it over to Stephanie, and she'll do the rest, part of the rest of the presentation, and I'll chime in when I can.
Great. Thank you, Jim. So nice to see you all, thank you for having me this morning. Stephanie Landrum, president and CEO of the Alexandria Economic Development Partnership, have been working extremely closely with the city manager to bring forward this opportunity and excited to start this part of the process. The slide that we have up is, we wanted to start here, we have established a project website where all information will be posted moving forward. We already have hundreds of people who've signed up through the capability of registering and receiving emails, and so we encourage others who have not yet and are interested in this project to follow suit. MonumentalALX.com, it actually is a page on AEDP's website, but we used a URL that is easy to remember. I'm going to start the presentation by talking about the project, and then we'll get into the structure, the proposed structure, the finances, the economic benefit, and as the city manager mentioned, we want to end the conversation with how we're going to engage moving forward. So this is a site plan, use that term loosely, a visual that shows the land in Potomac Yard where we are talking about this project. In maroon is the existing Virginia Tech Innovation Campus, which is under construction. That property is owned by the Virginia Tech Foundation, and this project that we're talking about today in no way compromises the vision that Tech has to build multiple buildings over the course of the next few decades. The project that we're specifically talking about, the Monumental campus, would be located in the area that's highlighted in red. So that is the existing empty lot that sits in front of the Potomac Yard Metro east of Potomac Avenue. The sections that are highlighted in light blue are properties that we would expect to move forward with future development in earlier phases, catalyzed by this investment in this Monumental campus. And we'll talk a little bit about the vision for that, suggested and desired timelines. And then the last section that is in the darker blue is what we're calling long-term future development. This is where more recently retail leases have been signed, and so there are commitments for 10 years or more for retailers to remain onsite and active. And so when you think about this, as we think about lots of other larger development projects like Landmark Mall, like we've seen over in the Carlisle-Eisenhower area, you have a catalyst, and then you start to see the impact over time, the spin-off impact. All of the millions of square feet that we plan in our small area plans vary, I can't think of one instance where they all have started construction, you know, in the same year. And so this, this project that we're talking about really will catalyze the more than 8 million square feet that is envisioned in the small area plan for North Potomac Yard. So on the next slide, let's talk a little bit about what the project is, and I apologize that this is small, and we're, as I said, all of this information is or will be up on our website. So the Monumental Sports and Entertainment Campus and the opportunity that we're talking about, the city manager mentioned a few of these things, is the opportunity to attract and bring over the Global Headquarters for Monumental Sports and Entertainment, and it's more than 650 employees. It also is because of the nature of the business that Monumental is in, an opportunity to bring a arena for their Washington Capitals and Washington Wizards professional sports franchises. They would also bring their relatively new, just launched this year, state-of-the-art Monumental Sports Network Media and Company and Studio that they operate out of, the Wizards' practice facility, an expanded esports facility, which is another sports line that they own and operate, and an opportunity for us, the city, to partner with Monumental to bring to bear a performing arts venue onsite. And all of these uses would be built in the area that's highlighted in red, and underneath would be a 2,500-space parking garage to service those various facilities. The arena phase, the way, the project that we're proposing would be financed through a public-private partnership between the Commonwealth of Virginia, the city, Monumental Sports, and the landowner, JBG Smith. And we'll, in future slides, I'll talk about the structure of that PPP. What is, I think, a couple of important statistics to think through?
Councilman Gary.
Again, please silence your phones, if you don't know how to silence it, please turn it off. Si usted, por favor, puede apagar su teléfono o ponerlo en silencio para que no estamos interrumpiendo lo que está pasando, gracias.
Thank you, Councilman Gary.
So the project that we're talking about in the red area, these are rough numbers, but this represents about 15% of the envisioned square footage of development at Potomac Yard. And so when you think about this opportunity, and certainly the way that we've thought about it as we are bringing it forward, is that this will catalyze this, by making this 15% project happen, we actually catalyze the remainder of the 85% of redevelopment that our community has envisioned in our small area plan, so the areas that are outlined in the light blue and the dark blue. In order to make sure that we start to see that value, one of the agreements that we're working on would be an arrangement with the property owner, JBG Smith, to outline how we can start to bring Phase 1 to fruition sooner rather than later. It will include a number of uses that are supportive and work really well with the campus, like the hotels, like ground floor retail and other entertainment retail spaces, and residential, which is the vision for this community. This community, per the plan, is envisioned to be mixed use, people living and working and recreating here, and what that then requires is the ability for us to start to move forward with some of the future phases. In the original, or in our anticipated Phase 1, the buildings that we've identified and would be working with JBG Smith to bring forward along the same timeframe are residential buildings, a Class A to trophy office building, which is actually the small, light blue square that's up to the top of the graphic. That building is anticipated to house a Virginia Tech, a small portion of Virginia Tech's operations. This was part of the original concept that we worked on with Virginia Tech back in 2018 and 2019. They call that their partnership building, and so the vision is for a private office building anchored by Virginia Tech, working on research and design. We have been waiting for the market to support the construction of that building since 2019, and have yet to be able to see that come to fruition. And so a clear benefit of catalyzing this area and this project will help us bring that office building to life. The other uses that are, that the manager mentioned and that I'll explicitly explain is that there is a vision for multiple hotels to be located in Phase 1 across from the arena. You can imagine that a use like this is a strong user of hotel rooms, but I will also say that our existing business partners in Potomac Yard have been asking for hotels in Potomac Yard since the day they moved in. All three of the major tenants bring people to Alexandria on a very consistent basis, their membership organizations, their think tanks, and they have been desiring hotel use adjacent, and unfortunately, the market just hasn't supported that. So again, another use that the community and business community has wanted that can become a reality because of this project. And then finally, and certainly maybe one of the first of many community benefits we'll talk about, is the vision for Potomac Yard and the small area plan calls for the dedication of a site to the city for a school. But the trigger for dedicating that site is actual development. And so by jump-starting and catalyzing this development and making, making delivery happen, the city can realistically start to plan to receive that site for the school in the nearer future, where now, without any development moving forward, when and if we would receive that site is in question. So the next few slides are just a few images that have been shared. In print on here, multiple places, it says for illustrative purposes only. Nothing, to be clear, nothing has been designed, but as we have gone through to evaluate whether something like this was possible, we did need to understand if and how some of these uses could fit within the existing framework of Potomac Yard. So this is an image looking north towards the airport. In the foreground is what a performance venue could look like, sort of the more half-moon-shaped building, and just beyond it is the arena with the corporate offices and practice facility attached just to the north. And then you see with the VT sign on it, that is the existing, under construction, Innovation Campus first building. And then to the left are the, what blocks of development might look like on the west side of Potomac Ave in Land Bay F. So the taller building would be potentially where a hotel could go, and the two buildings that you see in the foreground with green roofs would likely be residential with ground floor retail. Again, all completely illustrative, this part of what we design and what it looks like will go through a land use process like every other building does in Alexandria. The next two images are just again, some more concepts. So this is if you were standing at the Potomac Yard Metro looking west, to the left is the performance venue. The idea for the performance venue is that it would be mostly inside space, but could also accommodate some outside activities. And so think about concerts, book readings, poetry, fan-related activities. Again, with the city as the owner of this asset in partnership with Monumental, the vision for this asset is a mix of events related to Monumental and the activities there, but also activities that the city would, would very much be involved in programming and generating. The open space and community space plazas, this is the last picture here, seeing lots of elements, and again, all conceptual, very similar to projects that you all have reviewed as of late, where we prioritize pedestrian, we work on traffic flow, but also that, you know, streets and spaces are really built for human beings, and taking advantage of the incredible transit and transportation assets that we have in this location. So next slide, let's get into how we got here and what you all, as city council and our community, have asked us to evaluate when we bring forward economic development projects. So on the left, or I'm sorry, on the right, are a couple of just reminders that we do do economic development. We have done some pretty big projects here in the city, and we have used a variety of tools to facilitate everything from the redevelopment of Landmark Mall and bringing a hospital and medical campus, to bringing the National Science Foundation headquarters, and of course, the Virginia Tech Innovation Campus. Various tools have been used, but a similar process has been used for all three of those projects, and again, now for this one. When we are looking to bring forward a project, the first thing we do is look at the base case and what the market reality is. And so you've heard both the city manager and myself talk a little bit about current case. The reality of the market today is that there is strong, strong demand for retail. And without any intervention, it is very likely that what we have in Potomac Yard would likely stay for many years to come because it is a viable use. It is not aligned with what our small area plan adopted multiple times, but I think more recently in 2017 with some amendments in 19. It is not what our small area plan calls for. And so when we evaluated base case, what we evaluated was sort of the existing uses continuing as is with a small amount of redevelopment at the metro station. We also, and this is something I think that we've been talking about more recently as a community, in a post-pandemic world, looking at what a viable commercial uses has really changed. Prior to the pandemic, we were very much focused on office as being the catalyst for commercial activity, and in a post-pandemic world, we are looking more at commercial experiences where people still get together in person. And so you see here, again, on this slide, we've done education, higher education as a commercial catalyst, we've done medical as a commercial catalyst, and now we are evaluating an option that we would call entertainment and gathering as a catalyst. Another thing that we, that is sort of a core tenet when we look at these projects is trying to find opportunities to secure commitments from partners. For projects of this scale, it is not viable for the city to be bringing something like this to bear on our own, and so we have been with, working with the Commonwealth and with our property owner from the very beginning, and this is very much, as we'll start to get into the details of the public-private partnership, you will see that all parties are contributing to this opportunity. The manager mentioned community benefit and how important it will be to make sure that when a project like this comes to bear, we're making investments side-by-side in the community. So that has also been a guiding principle. And then I think these last bullets here, I want, I want to touch on very explicitly before we start talking about finances. One of the things that has served this city very well is finding ways that we can utilize our city's favorable cost of capital to facilitate projects. And what does that mean? That means that the city, as a double, triple-A rated city, has really great credit and can access things like tax-exempt financing. And so it means that borrowing money is cheaper for us than it is for lots of people in the private sector. And this, and so this And this, and so this is a tool that we have used successfully and many other jurisdictions use to facilitate economic development. But one of the guiding principles for us, and certainly for, for council, has been, if we use that tool, we need to make sure that any project we're involved with does not compromise that AAA rating and does not compromise our overall debt capacity and ability to do the sorts of capital improvement projects that we already have planned and want to accomplish. And so that was a guiding principle as we looked at this opportunity and put together this deal. We, we've talked a little bit about following our footsteps and investing in catalyst and really using a model that has worked for us. We also just, I'll just say this very upfront, there, we would not bring forward a project that was financeable on its own. So we use, we, we, when we evaluate these projects, we use sort of an open, open book policy. Like if you as a company or organization or real estate want to come and talk to us about us potentially investing and facilitating a project, you need to show us, open book, kind of your financials. And so a lot of what we have been analyzing over, over the months that led up to us bringing you this opportunity was really understanding how this business runs, how public entities have invested in assets like this, what public entities have done it right, what have done it wrong, and made sure that what we are bringing forward to you is a, is a proposal, is a proposal that everyone feels, can feel comfortable with. And so the last three things that I'll just mention here is making sure that, that the project generates revenue and that we can leverage that revenue so that we're not using existing taxes or, or existing revenues that the city has already planned to use elsewise. And then following our overall economic sustainability principles, which frankly, the largest one is trying to diversify where we're getting revenues from, not from residents. And so with all those principles in mind, I am going to walk us through how we are proposing to structure this project. And I'm okay, I don't hear any of the dings in the background. Fine, keep talking. So the opportunity to invest in this campus and is, is being structured so that the land and the buildings will be owned by a new Virginia Sports and Entertainment Authority. And so the, the entity that creates these sorts of authorities is the state. It would be created through legislation that will be filed this week, this coming week, and will be available for the public to look at once those documents come out. There are a number of authorities that exist in Virginia that fund and run and finance all sorts of things, from transportation to physical facilities. And so this is a model and a structure that the Commonwealth is familiar with. What this means is that the asset will be owned for the entire term by this authority, of which the city will be a part of the leadership. And this is important because there are lots of, it's an important point for me to explain because a lot of these sports-related and entertainment-related deals are structured very differently. And when you read articles and you do comparisons, as many people already have and will continue to do, it's important to understand the difference between public ownership and control and those where, those that are privately owned, but the public is contributing financials. And so one of the guiding principles, again, when we were, were looking at these various structures that we thought was very important for this community, was ultimate control of the asset. What that means is that we can make some decisions about how it gets invested in over the course of the term so that we don't end up with an asset that is obsolete at the end of a term. It also means that we own the land and the asset, and after this term, can decide what we do with it next and aren't beholden to someone who has built something that perhaps might not be what we want 40 years from now. So I say that from, from, from the front. Another important point is that we are not proposing to use any current tax revenues to finance this Monumental facility. And so we're going to get into describing how that, how, how that's possible. The entire Monumental campus that we've talked about, the arena, the offices, the practice facility, the parking deck, the, the investment requirement for that is $2 billion. And there are four, four mechanisms we'll be using, and you can see here in the pie chart. The, the first two are bonds that will be issued by this new sports authority, and there are two sets of bonds, one that is going to be backed by tax revenues generated on-site, and a second set of bonds that will be backed by the lease payments that Monumental will pay to use the facility. The, the third is an actual cash investment from the company. And the fourth is a capital investment proposed by the city to bring to, to bring the performance venue opportunity to light. And I have a slide that I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit about. When you look down here at the bottom, the mix of sources, and this is something that a lot of people have been asking us about, 40% is generated from Monumental directly, whether it's through their cash or their lease payments. 53% is also generated by Monumental in operating the asset. And the city manager mentioned performance agreements. So these tax revenues come from the events that will take place and that, that Monumental will be required to operate in this facility, from the food and beverage, from the retail, from, from lots of other activities that Monumental is, will have a performance agreement and is responsible for making happen. And then the city contribution to bring the performance venue to light represents about 5% of the overall deal. So here, this slide gets into some detail about what those tax revenues, the sources of those tax revenues, again, starting this slide by saying that none of current tax, none of the city's current tax revenues, including those that are obligated to pay for things like the Potomac Yard metro, are being used to support this project. Again, we started from a baseline of protecting all existing resources and requirements and built from there. The Commonwealth similarly wants to be clear that there is no inclusion of any taxes that the Commonwealth collects to date used for other things that are being obligated to this project. And so the revenue streams are, and this chart is a little bit larger, the annual rent payment paid to the authority for use of the facilities by Monumental, and it would be a 40-year lease, parking revenues generated in the 2,500 space parking deck, a new ticket admissions tax that would be charged on tickets to, at, at the facilities in this arena and in the performance venue, the ability for the authority to name the district and have somebody pay for those naming rights, and then the Commonwealth and city incremental taxes. And so those are the new taxes generated by the arena and Phase One development. The way that bonds, and this is probably a topic that the city manager and some of our advisors and I will, will have more detailed conversations with you all in the community about in, as part of the engagement. But the way that bonds are, when bonds are issued, bond deals are structured, you plan for a certain amount of coverage. And so we have planned for what we call two-times coverage. And so what, what is likely to happen is that at the end of each year after debt is paid, there will be a balance of funds available. And those funds, which we call excess revenues, will flow back to the Commonwealth and to the city on an annual basis. Those will go into our general fund and will be available for use by the community and city council as they see fit.
Before you get off of that, I just want to highlight just two things that I think are really important to emphasize that relates to the financing. So I think Stephanie did a great job covering all this, but it's a fairly complicated conversation. But I think what I would, would point out to the community, 95% of this project is being funded by Monumental. 95%. Now, we are, as a city and a Commonwealth, we are using our credit to assist. But pure cash of that $2 billion, 95% of that is covered by Monumental. The city's financial investment, which is a cash investment, this is, this is an element that is a cash investment, is to bring a, a new asset to the city, which would be the concert venue and esports facility. So that is where there's actual dollars attached to, to the project. That is a asset that becomes a city asset that we can deploy to the benefit of the community. And then the, the final point I want to just really emphasize, because it had it in the heading, but I don't want people to think new taxes are going to apply to me. The new taxes that are applied to this project, or things like an admission ta, or an additional admission tax if you go to an event, those reside solely in this, on the site. They do not, they do not apply to any other part of our city whatsoever. So when we talk about taxes, we talk about revenue generated by the development, we're talking about onsite. So to those of us that live in the city, we will receive some of the benefits of this, but we will not receive the burden of additional taxation because of this project. The other aspect is you will pay, if you go to an event, you are going to pay an admission tax, and that admission tax helps pay for the facility. So 95% city, city's investment is, is to create and develop an asset for the community and no new tax. The new taxes only apply onsite, they do not apply to the rest of the city. So I just want to emphasize those things, it gets fairly complicated, but that was important, so.
Thank you. And, and I know our communications today are almost squarely and solely focused on our neighbors and residents, but I will also say to the fans who might be listening, the new tax that we will be adding is of a similar burden that you currently pay in DC. So I don't, I don't want there to be any confusion that somehow coming to events here is being structured as something that will be more expensive than, than you currently. Our admissions tax rate is actually a tiny bit lower than the current sales and tax use rate that people who buy tickets in DC pay. So that's for the fans. So let's talk a little bit about the performance venue. The performance venue will be owned by the city, and the structure of this deal, and again, this is one of multiple agreements that are not done. We're talking about conceptually and will be working on in earnest over the coming months. This would be a, the city would have a lease, a ground lease with the sports authority who would own the rest of the campus. And so the city would be in a position to do a partnership with Monumental to share the cost of constructing this venue, and then would, would enter into a partnership and operations agreement with Monumental to run this facility. And I, we, we put on here a quote from the president of venues, which is with Monumental, who's somebody we've been working with, just to give you an idea of their vision for this, for this asset. We're looking at something like a 6,000-seat facility where you would host artists who are not big enough to, you know, to, to play in arena yet, but perhaps are more regional or emerging. But also, this venue is intended to be very flexible so that things like esports activities could happen here, like book readings, like corporate events, like city high school graduations. So, so these are things that we are thinking about and, and really thinking about how an asset like this would add to our inventory here in the city. This, you know, I've been here a while, we have talked a lot with our partners at Visit Alexandria about the opportunity to drive, continue to drive tourism, but also what leads we lose to neighboring jurisdictions because we don't have the right facilities. This is a facility and a size and the flexibility of it that we are missing in Alexandria. And, and our preliminary conversations with our partners, they are extremely excited about this opportunity. So let's talk about economic impact. I told you on the previous slide about how we evaluate things, we look at a base case. And so we engaged a third-party advisor, which, consultant, which is something that we have done with every other project that, that we talked about and that I mentioned. And that third-party advisor has, has run a lot of different scenarios and has worked with us as we've evaluated this opportunity. The preliminary kind of top numbers, and, and I'll start by saying that we are prepared to release the analysis and lots of the information that we were able to, to run through sometime next week. We're working on getting it in a format that is frankly understandable and, and can be digested by the community. So the top-line numbers, though, are that this, this catalyst opportunity would ultimately create, could ultimately create 30,000 jobs here in Northern Virginia. And that's through construction and operation. A total economic impact of $12 billion over the, the next several decades, you know, generating right here in Alexandria, but also spreading throughout Northern Virginia. It certainly is a, a testament to our, our ability to diversify revenue streams. Having, you know, the majority of the revenue that's generated by this project are business and use taxes. And that is very, very different than the sort of economic activity that we get from office buildings. And so, so it certainly hits that. Another number I think that will be really important to the city and to the community is that in meals tax alone, following our own current policies, this project would generate $50 million for our set aside for affordable housing. And that's just in the meals tax, that's not in other revenues, et cetera. And I, I've already talked a little bit about the dedication of the school site, but also as Potomac Yard develops, there will be additional financing for school construction in, in our current kind of policies and operations. And we're going to spend a good amount of time talking about transit and transportation improvements envisioned. So next slide. Let's talk about process. I think this is where the city manager was going to join me.
So I, I just want to say one thing about the economic impact. Now there, you, you may hear that arenas, things like that do not pay for themselves. What I would caution everyone is to look at that, what is this project? This project is not one piece, it's not a standalone stadium, it's not a standalone ballpark. It's, it is a combination of a series of development projects meshed together. You look at that from that perspective, and I think you'll find that some of those studies won't be relevant. There will also be plenty of opportunities to see where there, where our economic impact has information that you can determine for yourself whether you, you believe that those, those will pull off the positive financial numbers that we expect. So in the process, again, I, I think Stephanie's done a great job teeing this up to this point. We, we have moved from a framework of, of a potential deal to now engaging the community with a better understanding of what does this potentially look like? What does, how does it function? What are some of both the pros and cons of this opportunity? And really what, what we're looking for over the next several months in 2024 is to engage with the community in a fairly robust and significant way in regard to what this, the, the terms of the deal really look like and have a really good, meaningful dialogue. The entitlement process is very, 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 very similar to what we currently have. It did not change, in fact, it's the same. So that entitlement process, which includes public input and includes a lot of that discussion that I've been very familiar with over my two years here, will continue on. That land use process includes a master plan amendment to the Potomac Yard Small Area Plan so that we get additional specificity into the adopted document. The CDD amendments and a development use special permits for the project. So that process would move forward in 2024, along with the communication and the engagement of the community. So we talked about where, where this, where we are in the process, and I, I think it's helpful for the community to see the types of agreements that are required for this project. And every one of these agreements requires city council action, which necessitates public action. And so you have a master plan, a master agreement. That agreement establishes the guiding direction for all of the partners to operate. The land, land transactions like sales and lease and easements, the authorities' lease of the land to the, for the performance venue to the city, the authorities' lease of the campus for MSE's oper, operations, or Monumental's operations, design and construction agreements, revenue contribution and cooperation agreements, development agreements for construction and delivery of Phase, Phase One, and community benefits agreements. Probably the two things I want to stress on this slide, one is these are all agreements that will require public review and public approval. The second thing is all of these agreements will be performance-based. And what I mean by that is if we've assumed something in our model, a certain number of events, we are going to want to put something into a performance to help make sure that we are protected and have some level of guarantee that those things happen. It won't cover everything because there's obviously negotiations of this, but, but that's what a good deal does. A good deal has performance measures to guarantee the things that we've committed to the to the community, and that's what you'll see in some of these agreements. In terms of community engagement and priority topics, we fully realize transportation, infrastructure, neighborhood protections, all of those things are critical, critically important. If we deliver a project here and we create an impact to the community that is negative, then we have not been successful at all. So just on the transportation, I think it's helpful to talk a little bit about that. We are in the process of working feverishly with the state and our partners in regard to that. Just to recognize that this location really has set the table for this type of mixed-use center. It's been planned for over a decade. It already has been planned to accommodate a Virginia Tech's innovation campus. It's been planned to provide quality retail and housing opportunities, all within walking distance of the Metro Rail Station. We fully recognize that the Metro Rail Station will look to create some upgrades to that station to accommodate additional visitor traffic. We recognize that need. Also to accommodate the significant activities at the yard. The project has been designed to offer a lot of transportation choice. This is one of the best locations as it relates to transportation choice, walkability, bus rapid transit, multiple transit lines, the metro station. You know, there's also parallel streets that provide vehicular access in multiple directions, all in the special location. So our transportation plan really has four major parts. It's transit, it's roadway improvements, it's the use of technology to maximize capacity on our roadway systems and other things like that. It's regional improvements. The state has acknowledged that there are improvements that are necessary to continue to strengthen the transportation in this region, not just in Alexandria, but in the region. And we expect that those improvements will be moving forward in this effort. And then the final one, but very, very, very important, is neighborhood protection elements. You know, we understand that this is in a meshed environment, fabricated in a great way with our residential neighborhoods, and we want to do everything we can to protect that. There are many tools that we'll deploy to ensure that those things, when there's an event, for instance, that how parking is handled. How do we ensure that the convenience of the people actually living there are protected and prioritized over our visitors and things like that? Those are all things that we've learned from other experiences here and elsewhere, and we would expect to continue to work through that, really resulting in, over the next five years, some upgrades and improvements to our systems, as well as developing some operational tools to encourage people to come to these locations from non-vehicle, non-roadway travel. And I think that's really helpful. The other thing is recognizing how these facilities will operate together. You know, our environment and transportation has changed dramatically with the office environment in particular and the use of more flexible work schedules. And that doesn't mean that there's not impact, and I want to stress that this is a big deal for the city, and it's something that we are emphasizing very heavily with our partners and working through that.
Jim, can I just add? I think this is an important opportunity for us to make another sort of process comment. What the city council and community is used to is hearing about a project, seeing some studies that explain how that project might have impacts on certain things, and then through the entitlement process, making decisions about what mitigations and investments need to be made. We are doing that same thing, but because we had to shape a lot of this project sort of before we were able to do those detailed studies, what we have put in place are placeholders. And we have identified, as Jim just mentioned, kind of four areas where we know investment will need to be made. We have some very preliminary studies done, but the studies are done on a concept. And so as is normal in the process, we will go through, and as buildings get designed and as we understand more about how the facility will operate, those studies will be updated and we will be able to understand better what sort of investments need to be made. This is a similar, say it for the first time here maybe, this is a similar process we went through when Northern Virginia won the Amazon HQ2. It was a very large project. We knew that it was transformational, but that it would also need some community investment. And so when we announced the project, we said that there would be investments in transportation in sort of major topics or categories. And then over the course of the project being approved, both at the state and local level, those investments became more specific, and the sources of who was paying for what also became more specific. And we're still seeing some of those investments be made because they didn't all need to be made upfront. And so this is following that same playbook where we have, we're acknowledging that there will be impacts, and these are the areas that we want to invest in. We are being transparent with our partners at the state and our partners in the development community that certain investments are involved, are included in the financing, but then others will need to be managed as we go through the next steps in this process. And then the last thing I'll say on this slide in terms of community engagement, obviously the bulk of the language on here is transportation. It's what we anticipated would be one of the largest areas of interest, and so we took up, we wanted to make sure that we gave it that attention. But equally as important are what other community benefits does and can this project create, and what priorities does council and the community have. And so we put on here affordable housing, K-12, open space. And this last one I'll just explain is the idea about participating in what the future of retail looks like on this site. The property owner is very open and interested in having these conversations. I'll say this, and I don't mean it facetiously, one of the biggest questions we've gotten is what's going to happen to my Target? And so we want to acknowledge that our city loves our Target and our community and our development partner and Target, I think, are all aligned in trying to find a future location for Target in a reimagined Potomac Yard. To be clear, that has always been the vision for what would happen on this site, this project aside. The shopping center was built as a temporary use, and for those of us who've been around for a bit, we're getting to the end of that temporary period, which is somewhat incredible. And so this project is now giving us the opportunity to envision what this next phase of Potomac Yard is, but it's also pushing this conversation that was going to happen no matter what, about what is the next way that we accommodate retail. I will also just say that, you know, our development partner has just recently done a significant amount of retail merchandising just north of us in this area and has prioritized local and independent retailers, and so they are very open to having conversations about how we can accommodate both in this redevelopment. And so the last slide, I'll turn it back to the city manager.
So how do you get involved? I think we talked about where we are in this process, and we also have, we talked about the entitlement process, which our community is well-informed about. But there are some elements that we're going to inject into this process to get additional engagement, things like town halls. We have the website that's been set up that's specific to this opportunity, monumentalalex.com. We are looking, over time, to create some site tour opportunities for our residents where one can sign up and we'll give you a guided tour, explain what it looks like. You can kind of see the site, can understand it a little bit. We're also going to have what's called neighbor-to-neighbor conversations, which is a little bit unique. This is where you get, the residents and the businesses will get a chance to spend some time with Monumental, the Monumental team, so that there is a understanding of who is our partner, you know, what do they bring to the table? You know, how supportive are they going to be of the community's interests and things like that? I think that's really important. We're going to have community meetings. We've already gotten several requests to come to neighborhood meetings, civic association meetings, things like that. We're going to make ourselves fully available, and we'll go and explain what we explained today, as well as some other detail, and answer every question we can. We're also, given that the neighborhood focus in this area, we're going to have staff liaisons to some of the most nearby neighborhoods so that we can utilize some of our staff to connect in and keep everyone not just informed, but start to have that interactive discussion about some of those things. And then, you know, pop-up events, kind of what you saw during the zoning for housing effort, where we'll go to rec centers, we'll go to libraries, we'll go to events where there's significant populations that we can share the thoughts about what this is and make sure that everyone understands what is the request in front of the council. There are other elements that certainly we will be working on after the first of the year, but this is a range of the types of things we'll do. Translation services, hybrid options we'll make available as well. With our real main goal is to make sure that people are, again, not just aware of what's going on, but engaged and can offer their thoughts on the types of things that they're concerned about, the types of things that they really are excited about and want to enhance. And I think that's really helpful for us. So we're excited about this opportunity. So we have a website that is ready to go, has been ready to go. We'll continue to utilize that to provide any and all information, including presentations like today. We'll be on that, as well as receiving an opportunity for additional content. And I think we're setting up a webpage so that you can provide us with input and connection, you know, particularly if you'd like us to come out and talk to you about some of the work that's being done. So that's really where we are on that effort. We really appreciate the time today. It's a work in progress on some of these areas, transportation, neighborhood impact, our community engagement process. But I think we have, I think, the right mentality that we want to make sure that everyone understands and has had the opportunity to provide as much engagement as possible on this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Ms. Landrum, for the presentations. So obviously, this is the beginning of a very, very long process of engagement with the community to ensure that community voices, community perspectives, community opinions can shape the areas of this entire proposal and the consideration of this proposal. So at this point, while we're not going to get into kind of detailed discussions around the proposals, if there are any questions from the council on the engagement plan and kind of the process from here on out, I think this is now a good time. So Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, just want to acknowledge too, we understand as a council that this is a lot for our community at once, right? We already went through a bit of a divisive issue with the zoning for housing, and then to kind of throw this on top. So it's, and the big announcement with the governor and the sports team owner and everybody up there, so it's a big to-do. So we're cognizant of that, but again, reiterating, this is the first step, right? But now we're in the public phase, and we're going to go through our entire process. So something that's going to be very important to me, if we have a tracker. So this is something that we were kind of missing for zoning for housing, so, and I want to include not just everything that the city manager was describing up here, but if any of us are at events as well. So I know the mayor was at the Delray Civic Association, so we should count that, right? That should be an event. How many emails do we get? How many interactions are we having on social media? How many people have signed up for the news alerts? So we want to be tracking all of that so that we could show some of the engagement that we're doing. Secondly, again, I know this is the first step and everything, there's a lot of condensed information, right? So this is hard to kind of take fully in. You guys already know, I like visuals, I like infographics. If we could break it down into smaller morsels, so it's more digestible for folks, and if there's a way, like I said, to incorporate some more infographics, so when we're saying like, community benefit, and then we have a picture for, there's stuff that we could do with schools and show some pictures or something, right? And here's what transportation dollars will look like, here's what this will look like, that I think that'll be very, very helpful when we're breaking down all of the different community benefits. And I don't know how we're going to do this with, well, we probably do it, I've seen housing and put out some stuff, but to explain the imbalance with our tax base between commercial and residential and what kind of impact this has, I think that's a very, very crucial piece that we need to get at and explain as simply as possible, even though I know it's not always simple. But the easier we can make this for folks to be able to digest, the better. I think we're already working on this, but just a more detailed timeline for when our meetings are, and I know a lot of this other stuff isn't set yet, but a more detailed timeline. And if we could put in any of the information that we know that's going to happen with the General Assembly, when any of their actions will occur, or anything that we do will trigger something over there, whatever it might be. And thank you for all the work on this.
I did want to highlight, on that slide, I didn't see it at first, alexengage@alexandriaVA.gov is a great way, that is a specific email that's been set up for this project, and it allows us to, if you're interested and you'd like us to attend one of your community meetings or a business association discussion, please send that email, and we'll try to accommodate as best we can on that.
Great. Councilmember Bagley, and then I think Councilmember Pike.
Thank you, and thank you both for being here this morning and providing a lot more detail on the project. Just focusing on a few more process and information items that I think would be useful. The city manager's slide that included the various agreements that will go on, can we like sort of speak to how project labor and labor, I'm sorry, I can pause.
No, that's great. I had meant to mention that that would be a great example of a performance measure is a project labor agreement and local opportunities for local business to participate in the project itself from a financial standpoint.
I appreciate that. No, that's fine. I assumed it was in there, and then I just wasn't sure I heard it in the course of the presentation. So if we can just make sure we're addressing the quality of both the long-term jobs, which you addressed, but the short-term jobs, the construction-related jobs, and the quality and the safety-related measures there. The other thing that I know we've talked about, but I didn't see addressed here, is sort of the first responder relationship to this new entertainment district and how it will and won't sort of impact our local staffing levels, the regional cooperation we expect in keeping the district safe, and the kind of normalcy of that regional cooperation on events like this, and address, you know, who would be in operational control, where does the additional staff come from? I think that's a data point that I didn't see today, but I know the team is working on.
Thank you for, I feel like I've missed the two main points, project labor agreements, and there will also be a public safety and event services agreement. And that is really designed to do everything from protection of the neighborhoods, to make sure that the operations and the facilities are functioning effectively, and that's particularly as it relates to public safety. So we are working on that, and in fact, we have, the good news is there's quite a few models out throughout the country, some that have worked really well and some that have not. So we'll take advantage of the fact that we can learn from all of those things and put in the best state-of-the-art here to do that.
Thank you. And then getting back to sort of the visuals and the data analysis, I find that sometimes the big numbers, like $12 billion, it sort of sounds impactful, but it's hard to, like, who knows what $12 billion really feels like? So if we can turn that into maybe over time, like in the first two years of the project, we anticipate. The other thing that might help with data delivery is when you provide a number like $50 million in additional housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, what's our current funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? And what's the current base case? Because this parcel hasn't anticipated, you know, there are restaurants there now, there are meals tax being generated there now, and I think it would be useful to see, for example, if our current estimate, absent this project, is to generate $8 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the meals tax. With this district, it could be $50 million. I think it's a useful, to put it in scope. Let me just check my list real quick. Labor agreements, timeframes. Oh, and then, and I- Oh, and then, and I apologize, it was a very lengthy and thorough presentation, but could we also comment somewhere, and if I missed it, on DCA and noise? I think it's been an interesting and a valid point raised by a lot of people, which is, this is right in the flight path or adjacent to the flight path, I mean, you can see the airport in the distance. And so, to what extent, A, we are working collaboratively with the airport authority, so that we aren't, you know, gonna run into height issues, but also, how is the building design itself going to anticipate, you know, an outdoor venue going to anticipate airplane noise? And then, it wouldn't be me if I didn't throw this in there, can we make sure our construction conversations, our negotiations, talk about things like green roofs, talk about opportunities to have really environmentally sustainable buildings? We're starting from scratch here, we got concrete slabs, and that's the last thing I'll sort of say to everybody. I'm glad we're arranging site tours, but the Potomac Yard Metro already creates a really cool opportunity to just go see the site from an elevated position, and you don't have to buy a metro ticket. You can take the walkway up, and you can stand over the tracks without ever going into the system and look north, and you are looking at, am I? So, you are looking literally, when you're standing at the top of the tracks, looking north, you're looking at the pad, essentially, you know, for this space. And so, it's a rare treat, you know, to sort of not have to make it up in your head or wait for a tour. You can wander out there anytime and not pay anything, ride up, you know, walk up the escalator and look out at the site yourself. And I find it's, it was helpful to me, and I think it would be helpful for the community to, you know, to have that view for themselves.
Great. Also entertains little kids for hours, trains, planes, boats, everything, you got it all there. Councilman McPike?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the information that has been provided today. I think this is a good foundation for what is really the start of the consideration process of this proposal. I think one thing that's incumbent upon us is that we need to get a city council town hall scheduled as soon as possible, so that we can engage with the public ourselves and in a structured way. So, I'd hope that when we come back in January to consider the council calendar, the last item of our first legislative meeting in January that we have, in one of those weekends in the early part of January, a city council town hall on the calendar, so that we can, you know, directly answer questions and hear the thoughts of residents in a structured way. And then, second, I have a question about what is the, what is the plan for this Monumental A L X website? When will we start seeing substantive materials like what are in this presentation, some of the sort of charts that Councilmember Bagley was discussing, showing the baseline revenue case, and then what you all believe is the new case based upon this proposal? When the current site is pretty much just a landing page?
Sure. So, following today's meeting, we will be posting the presentation on this site, and I also think we'll be able to post this actual presentation, because this meeting is being live broadcast and recorded. So, we will, as the meeting ends and we're able to do that, we will provide that as well. And then, we're working on the economic analysis to be posted next week. The structure, the way that we have the website structured right now is, we have a number of people, uh-oh.
Just get it back. All right, just keep going, just keep going while she's done.
You can come back and watch the video. So, we have, we have the ability for people to sign up for an email, like, subscribe for updates. And so, our intent and what we did actually, in fact, for today's meeting, is anyone who had signed up, we sent an email out that said, there's this meeting, you can watch the presentation. And so, as we post new content, we will use that email subscriber list to alert people, as well as other forms of contact.
I think you lost your mic, too.
Oh. Okay, back on, sorry. Essentially, if you haven't subscribed, please subscribe, we're using that as a tool to alert people of new content being added to the website.
How about now?
Please subscribe.
There we go.
All, we will push, we will push updates through the subscription as things get posted on the website, to include this meeting, the presentation, the economic impact analysis, new visuals based on the feedback that we've gotten here today. I will just say, I'll take this as an opportunity to plug our team, Ebony Fleming, who runs the city's communications, Liz Bolton, who runs communications for A E D P, they also could use some sleep, and, but we recognize that getting this, and I didn't mean that insultingly, I meant to acknowledge their hard work. They, we know that providing information in multiple formats is a key part of helping people understand and giving them the materials that they need to evaluate this opportunity. And so, we have a lot of things in process right now, and your feedback today has been incredibly helpful.
Any additional questions before we get to our normal public hearing docket? Councilman Aguirre, Vice Mayor Jackson, Councilman Chapman?
Yeah, I forgot, and I think we covered this, but also the local businesses, and if there's a procurement process to kind of track that. And also, you guys covered this very well, but if we could put another just graphic about what our process looks like for economic development, a little flow chart or something, because we've had a lot of questions about transparency, and, you know, I think it's proven upon us to be able to explain what the process is and show it clearly, so that our public can be more informed of what it is.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Aguirre. I did an interview on Wednesday, and a TV reporter said that, they had talked to someone who said that when we did Amazon and Virginia Tech, it was totally different, that we had tons of engagement before it was announced. And I said, no, 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 no. So, that is absolutely not true. I said, this is following the exact same, exact same process. There was an announcement, and then we had a lot, a lot of engagement. But I appreciated that they remembered all the engagement. So, Vice Mayor Jackson?
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, say thank you. I know everyone has been working really hard on this, our city staff, A E D P, communications. So, we really do appreciate it, and we know, I know that announcement the other day, as I've been telling a lot of people, we've already gotten a considerable amount of emails. That was day one of public engagement. Everyone thought it was a done deal already, still thinks it is. Hopefully, this has cleared that up. It is not. Still have a long way to go. A couple of points I did want to make, even though I know the city manager was bringing this up a little bit today, is when we are doing those studies, especially traffic studies, because this is a major concern for a lot of people, the two big ones that I've been hearing about are public safety, which Councilmember Bagley already asked about, but the other one is our traffic and transportation plan. So, people are really concerned and want to see a plan sooner rather than later. And I know, you know, we've heard a lot about the Potomac Yard Metro and Metro in general, and those concerns are weighing into how people are going to get here, because, you know, you think about it, if this venue does occur, people will have tickets in hand, and then will get really frustrated if there isn't an easy way to come in and out of our city, and that's not a good look. So, you know, when we're looking at traffic like over the Woodrow Wilson Bridge, how are they coming from Maryland and back? How are they coming from, you know, through DC and through Arlington and back? So, Route 1, what is it going to look like, not just here in Alexandria, but our-
You are in the meeting now.
All right.
Recording in progress.
Our neighboring jurisdictions, and how are they planning for this as well if this moves forward? So, all of the traffic studies, not just Alexandria, but how people are coming in and out of our city in that regard, on a road.
Good point.
Thank you.
Councilman Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for putting this together. I think a couple of my colleagues have already hit on a number of things, but I do want to reiterate that I'd love to see, as we usually do our list of meetings, definitely how many people are being contacted. I think the role of social media and what we're seeing there is quite interesting, and making sure that we have our pulse, our finger on the pulse there as well, I think, is key, as people are interacting with, hopefully, the city website and some of those things. We have some of these liaisons that are connecting there, too. I think the city manager mentioned some neighbor-to-neighbor meetings with M S E, and I think as we do that, I believe you may have said this in your comment, but making sure they have a kind of organization-to-business meeting with local businesses, and specifically, I don't, I'd love to separate that from, you know, some of the residential neighbor conversations as well, but also maybe have them mixed, but making sure business owners get an opportunity to correct, connect directly with that organization. I agree with my colleague, Councilman Aguirre, around economic development, transparency, and kind of what our process is. I've had a lot of questions about that, and as you've said, we're not doing anything that we've done, doing anything differently from the process we have. I do think there's an opportunity also to educate about the state process, some of the boards, some of the opportunities, some of the timeline there as well, and kind of not to take away from the role of our delegates and state senators, but being able to educate the community and maybe connect the dots with their offices as well, what the state process is, and where can people get engaged in that process and with them individually as well. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any additional questions? Well, thank you, thank you to the manager, thank you to Ms. Landrum, thank you to both of your teams. I know you guys have worked tirelessly over certainly the last couple of weeks, but going back quite a bit of time, so thank you for all of that. All right, Madam Clerk?